Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, October 27th, 2020. This is the part of the show that I like to share my screen. And all who could, please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all. Thank you. All right. Well, let's take a little roll call. Okay, if you're here, please indicate so. Holly Bem?
Here.
David Blumey?
Here.
Aaron Levitt Smith?
Here.
Craig McCormack?
Here.
Alan Needham?
Here.
And William Rice, that's me, present. And our alternates, Rich Cortez?
Here.
Hiya, Rich, how you doing?
Good, how are you all?
Good. Julie Eaton? Julie?
Unmute yourself, Julie.
It doesn't look like you're... Okay, I'm going to read your lips. I think you said "here." Okay. We can't hear you. And not applicable. Okay, excellent. For a second time in a row, we have all six regular commissioners in attendance tonight, so there is no need to promote an alternate. But as usual, please feel free to contribute in those areas where you can and when you can. Okay. Uh, let's see. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes of the October 13th meeting. Mr. Secretary, would you mind taking us through the minutes?
Yeah. I noticed they're all Page 2 again. I don't think that matters because the lines are numbered, but it's of interest.
Yep.
So, lines 1 through 51.
Nothing for me.
Okay. Lines 52 through 101. Okay.
On line 78, there needs to be a space between "she" and "explained."
We should spell "she" with one E, too.
Once you break it up, it's okay.
Yeah, it just needs to say.
The E, we're good. Okay. Yeah, on line 85, there should be a space between "inclusion" and "working."
Okay. Yep.
Lines 102 to 151. Okay. Lines 152 to 201.
160, there needs to be a space between "she" and "explained."
Yep.
Okay. Let's see where... Line 202 to 252.
To what? I'm sorry, to what? What number, Alan?
252 is the last one.
So, 185, there's a spelling, I think, is aquifer. I don't think that's the right spelling.
That's the page.
Good job of sounding it out, though.
Yeah, it is. Exactly.
Aquifer should be spelled A-Q-U-I-F-E-R. Aquifer.
What line is that?
185.
185.
That was the last page back.
It occurs several times, though.
Okay.
Yeah, it does.
There needs to be a line 191, a space between responded stating after the word Glidden.
Yep.
On 186, there needs to be a space between Smith and asked.
Yep, 186.
And I just want to clarify, on 188, I was objecting to the use of the picture. That's really what that was about. I didn't want the picture being used. Yes, the piece of land, but it was the actual picture. So, I don't, you know... So, objects to the use of the picture of the piece of land
Okay.
in the plan.
So, we'll add "use of the picture," that gets added, "of this piece of land." That's on line 188.
Thank you, Glenn. Oh, yeah. Oh, I know.
Okay, so moving on, next page. Lines 202 through 252. Can't hear anything. Lines 253 through 302.
Looks good to me.
Okay. This one ought to be easy, 303 to 308.
That's good.
Can I have a motion to approve or accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
That was you, Aaron. Thank you.
Second.
And Dave Blumey seconded, okay. Is there any discussion on the motion to accept the minutes as amended? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions, please say "I abstain." Very good. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioners. All right. Okay, now we're going to move into a public workshop. We have been working on the Affordable Housing Plan, and this is an opportunity for members of the public, and I would guess even elected officials or appointed officials, to provide input to the Planning Commission that we could consider for the final version of our Affordable Housing Plan. So, Mike, first question I have for you. You had sent out the, let's say, revised version following our last meeting. I made a few markups to that. And could you tell me if those were included or are they still on the table for consideration?
The revisions that both you and Aaron made, we updated the document with those changes, and that's what we posted online.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so, you know...
I apologize. My computer is wonky for whatever reason. Like, I couldn't see your edits, Bill. I don't know what's going on. So, I couldn't track change... I couldn't send my track changes. It didn't come up as track changes.
Yeah, I think what I did, Aaron, you had submitted a couple changes.
I highlighted.
Yeah, prior to my revision. I took yours and put them in to my version as well.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you. Because when I sent it, my track changes made the changes, so you wouldn't have been able to tell.
Yeah.
So, anyway, sorry.
Right, so, Mike, were you able to see the changes that I made? Okay, good.
Yeah, so that's what the document that was uploaded was, incorporated both of your changes.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, so what we have right now...
For the record, which version is the most current? Because the date's modified. The only one in October is October 13th. At least in the folder that I'm looking in, in the Dropbox.
We may not have updated the Dropbox. I know we updated the posting online with the agenda.
Okay.
Mike, when did you post it? When was it publicly posted?
Last week. I don't recall which day we posted it last week. It was either... It may have been last Thursday.
Okay, so we have posted with the electronic notice of the meeting, what I would consider to be the, let's say, final draft coming out of the Planning Commission. Of course, that's subject to revision based on input from other people. And, you know, this is the first of what could be maybe one or two listening sessions, depending on the type of input that we do get. I think what we had envisioned for this public workshop, since we can't be together in a public space, that we would allow or make available two avenues for people to give us input. One would be written comments, and in the agenda, which was published for this meeting last week, written comments were to be emailed to mglidden@simsbury-ct.gov no later than 12:00 PM on Monday, October 26th, 2020. Comments will be read into the record. The second avenue that we made accommodations for would be a live interaction with the Planning Commission. And people who were interested to do that were asked to register and send their name, address, and phone number to Laura Barkowski. And the last I knew, there was at least one person signed up to join us tonight. And, Mike, through correspondence, I think you told me there was one written comment?
We received two written comments.
Right, okay, because one came late.
One came late.
All right, so, yeah, maybe I'll take that up right now. At the pleasure of the Commission, would you consider receiving written comments, although it was after the deadline?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Do we have to make a motion for that, Mike?
No. No, because I'll just read it into the record.
Okay.
The two correspondence we have.
Yeah. Okay, and, Mike, you've also put together a brief PowerPoint presentation that kind of frames the discussion and the purpose of the Affordable Housing Plan. Did you plan on sharing that with us tonight?
I was planning on sharing it with you, but it's your call. If you want to wait on that, or you want me to do that tonight?
Okay.
Maybe just for the education purposes of the public?
I'm going to take a leap of faith here. I see Danielle Hill is with us. Is she the person who signed up?
That's correct.
Okay, so, Mike, I would say, yeah, we may not have a large crowd of the public available tonight, but I think for Danielle's benefit, I'd like you to go through those slides.
Okay.
Agreed.
I will do that right now.
Yeah, I see it.
All right. So, we're here because of, under statute, specifically 8-30J, requires each community in Connecticut to develop a Affordable Housing Plan, which illustrates how they will increase the total number of affordable units in the town. Law requires that these plans are created and updated once every five years. So, this is Simsbury's first Affordable Housing Plan pursuant to 8-30J, a general state statutes. And I'm on the second slide. Is it still on the first one?
I still see number one.
Yeah, hold on, let me... I apologize for that. Let's try it this way. Okay.
Yeah.
There we go.
That's good.
So, I just hit this... 8-30J is what requires us to develop and implement an Affordable Housing Plan that has to be updated every five years. And this is a relatively new statute that was just approved by the General Assembly back in 2017. So, what we also have is the other statute. It's 8-30G of the general state statutes, the Affordable Housing Appeals Act. And what this really says is that every community in Connecticut is supposed to provide 10% of their total housing stock as what will be considered affordable housing. Communities that fail to provide 10% of their housing stock as affordable are subject to Affordable Housing Appeals, which basically says if you have a development that you're proposing for the purpose of creating affordable housing, local regulations are basically do not apply to those developments because it's trying to further creation of affordable housing units in the community. 8-30G defines affordable housing in various different categories. There's a whole point system when you're talking about how do you get to that 10%. One way is that the units are deed restricted, which the restriction basically limits the sale or resale price for the house for up to 30 years. Other ways could be the individuals living in the home have government assistance, meaning a USDA loan, the United States Department of Agriculture, or Connecticut Finance Housing Authority... Connecticut Finance Housing Authority loan. Basically, these are just examples. There's many other ones that count towards as government assistance. It's really, it's individuals that, from an income perspective, qualify for a different type of loan that the average homeowner may not qualify. And it assists getting people, mainly first-time home buyers, into homes. The last one is rental assistance, because the rental market also counts towards that 10%. So, you have rentals such as Section 8 or other similar state programs. Those people also, or those households, go towards that 10%. But it's in a different, it's a scale or point system that's in the law. I didn't want to get too deep into that. So, one of the things we said earlier, we're talking about the deed restrictions, is when is a home considered affordable? And basically, it's based on the income level of the household, and 30% of their income is the max that they can spend on housing costs. This means the loan payments, rental payments, utilities, HOA fees, et cetera. 30% is the gold, is the magic number. And for purposes of determining, you know, the average, the median income area, 8-30G uses, that refers to areas that are developed by HUD. For example, we're in the West Hartford, East Hartford, Hartford metro area, which, in the plan, there's a map along with the actual income levels for this area, for that area, for the average median income. As for 8-30G and the 10%, where do we stand? Well, Simsbury is at a healthy 4.4%. It's, we're not at our 10%. In order to get to our 10%, we would need to add 481 new affordable units or have units qualify deemed affordable in order to get 10%. The caveat to that is, we'd have to get 481 units and not approve a single market rate development or have another market rate unit added. So, what the Commission discussed is, you know, 481 is a large number. How do we start making progress towards getting towards that 10%? The concept was discussed and kind of endorsed by the Commission as saying, "Let's put a goal at 1%. We're going to add 1% over the next five years." And that's how we're going to kind of take a slow approach, or not slow, but systematic approach on adding more affordable units. And one that's manageable, that 10%, like I said earlier, that's 481 units. It means you can't approve a single market rate development period. Everything would have to be deemed affordable. So, what's the Planning Commission looking for? What we're looking for is input on the actions, the goals, and just overall importance of affordable housing, as outlined by the plan, but also importantly, statute. Because this plan is required by statute, so we're bound to 8-30G and the applicable subsections. And maybe I'll leave this slide for later, but really, we're going to... The Commission will review the comments, both written and then anyone who participates, and see where we can incorporate some of those concepts into the plan. Just keeping in mind that we have to follow statute, because this is a plan that, you know, like I said, it's required under 8-30J of the general state statutes. So, we're bound by that. And that's what the comments will be reviewed in context with. And that's all I had quick is an Affordable Housing update.
Great, Mike. I think that summarized it very well.
Mr. Chairman, I have... You want me to read the two correspondence that we have into the record now?
Yes, please.
So, your first is an email. "My name is Spencer Hill. I live at 10 Carver Circle, Simsbury, Connecticut, 06070. I would like to submit the following comments and propose Affordable Housing Plan for Simsbury. In the section of the plan entitled 'Why is Affordable Housing Important?' there is no recognition to the importance of affordable housing in increasing the town's racial diversity. While race and income are not casually related, there is a correlation. Persons of color in CT are disproportionately have lower incomes. Recognizing that Simsbury is racially and socially economically homogeneous and that our housing stock is inaccessible for large groups of the state's population is important as our efforts to dismantle systematic racism. In terms of potential solution, increasing mixed-income housing would improve the town's affordable housing. The goal would not be to create a concentration of low-income housing, but to integrate low-income housing into the rest of the town's zoning plan. Another potential solution is to voluntarily adopt a definition beyond the statutory requirements. The medium-income approach identified by 8-30G is too high. This value acts as a floor rather than a curling, and the town could voluntarily adopt a policy focused on housing available to those with lower income levels. Sincerely, Spencer Hill." And then, your second email. "Hi, Mike and Bill. I misunderstood the rules about participating or sending in comments, so I'll be sending it via email. Thank you so much for your work on this. I wanted to offer some specifics and briefly a multifaceted rationale for accessory housing options throughout the town. One option for affordable housing, and environmentally friendly and accessible housing at Simsbury Farms as another. The former is something a lot of people are interested in for various reasons, and that has been big success in other areas. Small accessory housing units can be very energy-efficient and environmentally friendly and add little demand to town services and can provide the main homeowner with additional income, perhaps a caretaker, an in-law apartment, maybe someone else's in-laws, or a college grad or young couple. Accessory units can also provide the town with additional tax revenue and a distributed network of affordable housing throughout the town, rather than 'here is affordable housing district.' Affordable housing should be integrated as possible. If we are allowing Airbnb, I think we should allow this either attached or small standalone, maybe limit the square footage or for lots of greater than an acre. There may be models for this, but I think there are some common sense rules. We need to avoid suggesting that we give up important pieces of open space. There are many possibilities, and open space benefits everyone in different ways. We are finalizing a list of values for open space, and no matter what is better to integrate into the built environment and infrastructure as much as possible. If you're already doing all this, I apologize. I'm out of the loop. If you're accepting written comments into the public record, please add them. This is from Susan Messina." And that's all I have for written comments at this time.
All right, thanks, Mike. Okay, then I guess we'll go into our live interaction with Danielle. Hello, Danielle.
Hello.
How are you?
I am well. How are you?
Good. Thanks for taking time to meet with us this evening. Really appreciate it.
Of course. I am very thankful to be a part of the group. I appreciate you guys taking the time.
Yeah, so if you could just, before you start your comments, please restate your name and your address, and then you can let us know what you're thinking about.
Okay. My name is Danielle Hill. I live at 10 Carver Circle in Sinsuri, 06070. And as an edit to my husband's comment, the email that he had sent in, he had missed, he had had an autocorrect issue with the word "ceiling"
Okay.
that had said "curling."
Yeah, okay, so...
Just so that's on the record.
Yeah, that makes a little more sense.
So, I have a bit prepared, so...
Yeah, go ahead. Take your time.
So, thank you, Planning Commission, for taking some time out of your meeting to hear from us. I am the founder of the Simsbury Diversity and Inclusion Working Group. I put on the seminar that was created through the library last Thursday. And I was very pleasantly surprised to see many of you there. The purpose of that meeting was was mostly informational for the public to get familiarized with what affordable housing is, the policies around it, and what Simsbury has been doing so far. So, in an ideal world, what we would like to do is have several of these grassroots organizations to come together and come up with cohesive plans to be able to present to you, the Commissioners, to then take into, you know, take into action and possibly develop into future policy. So, regarding the proposed policy document, that plan notes that Simsbury's goal is to raise affordable housing by 1% per year over the next five years. So, that would put us at 9.74% of affordable housing in Simsbury, which is still less than the required 10%. I appreciate that it is a slow process. However, I think within five years, we should be able to find ways to get to 10% and exceed 10%. The Dorset Crossing Plan, that was an example, for those who are affirmed with MS, would have 48 designated units for those with that specific disability. I think that that should be applauded. But it's also restrictive in terms of other disability groups. And while there is also an emphasis on care for the elderly, there... I believe that that's very important. While the elderly are moving out of their homes and are creating spaces for young families to move in and come to this beautiful town... Um, they need to be taken care of while on limited, limited income. So affordable housing for the elderly is extremely important. Um, and so having a plan for that is is admirable and and greatly appreciated. Because if there wasn't something like that, I wouldn't be living in this beautiful home um with my husband and our two sons. So I do believe that that that's admirable. But again, um, being bound by eight thirty G is um. I don't think that that is a boundary. I think that it's a starting point. And that gives an opportunity for Sims Barry to say here is eight thirty G. Here is our starting point. And this is where we are. Because we are a place where our affordable housing will allow young families to move here and not have to have a um not have to have Section Eight or a specialty loan for first time home buyers. Or have fall into these data restrictions, which is really, really difficult. Um, you know, those are far too high. And if if Sims Barry could set the tone of of those of that just not being enough. Then, you know, the members of our of our municipal government could then return to the state government and say, listen, this is what we did. Because eight thirty G is a mess. And shouldn't we be able to go down to the legislature and say, this is what Sims Barry did? Do it, do it like we did it. We're doing better. And so I think by expanding upon that and showing how we can do better and we can be more inclusive and we can open this town to more diversity. Then that's what's going to put us on the map. That's what's going to want to get people to want to move here and be appreciative of the beautiful spaces and of this amazing town. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Uh, very well put. Um, I think maybe I might want to make one clarification. Um, I I believe the Affordable Housing Plan as it's written now. Our goal is to in- increase the affordable housing stock by one percentage point over five years. Okay, so that that means we would be at five point four five in five years. But the I it's still, all your comments are still pertinent uh regardless of what our current published goal is, so. Do appreciate your comments.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Yep. Now, I'm going to ask one of the commissioner or any of the commissioners who attended your your meeting last week. Uh, the anyone, did anyone, I didn't, I didn't attend. Okay, so Dave and Aaron. Um, and Danielle, I'm going to ask the the question of the commissioners and then maybe you can clarify. But in in the presentation, were there uh suggestions for uh specific types of affordable housing that kind of piqued your interest? Or okay, question one, what was there specific uh suggestions on how to uh in increase the affordable housing in Sims Barry?
I don't recall any specific suggestions. There were, it it ranged people making different ideas. Uh, but there were no, I don't, I don't have a memory of any specific suggestion.
Okay.
I don't either.
Okay, did, do you agree with that, Danielle?
I I do. It was purely um an informational seminar.
Awareness type of thing? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great.
To hopefully be expanded upon.
Okay, you know, um.
But I let me just add that I think that the participants in that forum were very impassioned in their enthusiasm for affordable housing being one of the uh major steps toward increasing uh diversity and and inclusion.
Yeah.
So affordable housing was just one of the pieces, but the but the participants were very, very enthusiastic about doing something.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
If I may just speak on that. Um, I believe that that is um the first step in increasing um the diversity in Sims Barry is is to create affordable housing, not to say that anybody of a specific race, color, creed is um, needs affordable housing.
Yeah.
But to show that we're open and we have our arms held wide for people to come here and to to show that we want them.
Yep.
Is important. And so I believe that affordable housing really is the first step. Because then that is, that's opening the door.
And and one of the participants specifically cited that uh he felt that Sims Barry had not been inviting when they were considering moving where to move, where to live. And that that feeling of of invitation was not not uh put forth. That what I remember, Danielle.
Yeah, I remember that, too.
Mm-hmm. So Danielle, you had mentioned, um, you know, uh, to me, it sounded like uh maybe there should be an uh another meeting with these grassroots types of uh organizations or or representatives. However, I don't know how many groups there are out there. Um, I I'm speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for the commission necessarily. Uh, we put a lot of time into thinking of strategies or actually specific ways to increase the uh number of affordable housing units in Sims Barry. Um, I I I feel that there are probably more options that we haven't captured. And maybe these these novel options could come from uh what I call grassroots organizations that that you mentioned. Um, you know, when you look at the numbers, four hundred and eighty-one units, we need to uh, we need to have qualified for uh affordable housing just to meet the ten percent. Um. Uh, Mike, how many new housing units were were built in Sims Barry? I guess, you know, we probably had with all the apartments is probably a big, a big jump. And um, I don't know, Danielle, if you've ever watched any of these other other meetings, but the math behind that actually sets us backwards. Because more market rate houses are being built, you know, at a higher rate than affordable.
Yes.
So we we, I'm not going to say we struggle. I'm going to say that we that we discuss a lot, you know. What can we do? Do we want to do it? How does it get done to to change, you know, to to move the needle? So that that's, you know, we're not at a point yet, I don't believe, where we have cast our uh our document in stone. I still think there's an opportunity. Uh, I would personally love to hear other, you know, potential solutions uh other than the ones that uh that that we've researched and uh, you know. I'm welcome. I I I'm willing to listen to whatever whatever's out there. And if we need to set up another meeting to do that, we can, we can certainly do that.
Hey, Bill? I was just gonna, I I was thinking the same thing that you said uh when I heard Danielle mentioned uh grassroots grassroots groups, um, you know, developing ideas and wanting to come share ideas with the commission. I thought that was a fantastic idea because uh personally, I think the more input we can get, ideas we can get from um, from the community would be would be beneficial. So I like, I echo your sentiments that we welcome that.
Now, I know that uh when we first talked about this meeting we had here, we wanted to call it a listening session. We wanted to get, seek input from from the public. Um, honestly, I'm a little disappointed. Maybe we didn't advertise enough or uh.
Yeah. Bill? I think um I'm getting some texts from people. They didn't realize that there was a format. And I I don't know what, and so they didn't realize you had to sign up in order to get. And they're also saying that S C T V is going in and out. So there's some transmission issues. So I I think more people would have come on. Um, uh, so if if we want to do this again, I I think I I'm I'm not sure what the answer is, but just to make sure people know that they have to sign up. I tried to let people know, but um certainly, you know, we could try to announce that and get the word out there that they have to sign up with the with the town.
Yeah.
Um, Bill, um, I'd like to just make a comment to Danielle. Uh, I want you to know that we share your uh enthusiasm for this topic. We um met last year, uh about a year ago. We set priorities as to what we wanted to work on this year. We had finished the 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 Plan of Conservation and Development, which was a big task that we had performed. And we brainstormed uh several dozen high priority things that we felt that the town needed working on. And affordable housing was by far and away the one that we all chose. And we've spent most of a year working on this plan, trying to trying to go beyond eight thirty G. I just want you to know, we've had many discussions that that isn't enough for what we need to for the people of our town. I just wanted to reassure you that we we share your your goals.
I appreciate that. I I I think that there are so many opportunities for um for multi-level um coalition building in terms of getting this done. Um, and um Aaron, excuse me, I don't remember your last name. Um. People, people who don't um have much interaction with with government usually don't understand that if you're going to speak at a at a commission meeting, then you need to register first or submit. Um, and so that's sometimes difficult um to understand or or realize before it's too late. Um. And so that's always something a little, that's a little bit complicated when you're trying to have um when you're trying to um be receptive to to what the community is saying.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and maybe having um a community liaison. You know, somebody to to volunteer to be that person um would be helpful in terms of acting as um you know, a microphone back and forth.
I think I hear Danielle offering to be our uh community liaison.
Only if I can put it on a resume. Covid's killing me.
Why not? The the action plans that we have outlined are going to require quite a number of volunteers to help them make. I don't know if you had a chance to see all the things that we're specifically suggesting.
One of those suggestions specifically is to provide education around to a variety of to realtors, to potential homeowners, to a variety of uh of of people, so that they have a greater understanding of what affordable housing is. Because my my own sense is that the vast majority hear those words and don't really know what they mean, particularly the definition that the legislature has put on top of it.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's its own thing. I don't think anybody really understands that.
And that education probably is a is something that needs to happen sooner than later.
Yeah.
From that education will come other ideas and other possibilities.
Yeah, and I and I believe that clarification of of um eight thirty G or or redefinition of eight thirty G should come up in the legislature at some point. Um, although this session is going to be definitely overwhelmed by by Covid response, unfortunately. Um. It doesn't not relate to Covid response, though, in terms of all of the people who've lost their jobs.
Yeah, I think, Danielle, that's a good, it it might not be for this session, but it's something for us to because I think we would need more time to work with our state representative and our state senator to, you know.
Coming up real quick.
Yeah, so so I, you know, I I don't think we would be ready for this session, but it is something to think about in getting our state representative Hampton and our state senator, whoever that may be after, you know, next week's election. Um, you know, kind of on board, because I I think we've talked about. I I know Holly, you kind of trumpeted, um, you know, the the law needs reworking. Because I think, um, and I don't want to be clear, we're confined at this point by the law, you know. So we're trying to do this plan based on the law as it's written now. Um, and so, you know, that's that's how we have to kind of move forward. But I I think we can, um, you know, be creative. But but we're, it it does limit us. I mean, that's just the reality of of the law as it's written. But but I I think you bring up a good point. I think, um, you know, that would be something to think about.
Um, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention my favorite type of um, my favorite model of housing. Um, so my um I feel like I always toot my own horn with this one. But my um, my master's degree is in Sustainable Development and Policy Advocacy and Analysis, which is a mouthful. Um. And my kind of midterm thesis was on um sustainable urban planning. So um, a friend in town and I have been talking about um the Toronto model um of of intermixed um affordable housing with a cooperative model with um your standard housing. And so that is um, you know, standalone homes with in the same physical area as um townhouses and um apartments that is all centrally located around a town green with shops and it's all, and I and I always put in like a town garden. Um. And I think that we base a lot of our restrictions on the character of Sims Barry. But in my mind, if we had something like that within our our stretch of, you know, right down the road um next to the shops. That would be beautiful. And it would be even more enticing to see that we're intermixing housing within walking distance to a grocery store with a um, you know, a town a town farm, you know, a town garden where you can get your produce through the summer, you know, turn it into a C S A. That way you have income from from that. And I mean, it could all be municipally owned. So I mean, that's the way that my brain works, but um, so that's that's what's been floating around my head.
Yeah, I I think those are the types of ideas that we want to hear, you know. Uh, before we issue our Affordable Housing Plan as uh I believe it has to be approved by the the Board of Selectmen. Um, but uh, yeah, tho- those are the ideas we're looking for. Um, but, uh, yeah, tho- those are the ideas we're looking for.
Well, I was about to like drive around and start taking pictures and sketching over them. You know, what I'd like it to look like and then mailing it where it needs to go.
Yeah.
Uh, whatever you'd like.
All right, Commissioners, I, I think, I think we need to, um, provide another opportunity for people to, uh, to give us their input. Um, maybe, you know, and then, and at the next meeting, is our next meeting, uh, two weeks from now?
Your next meeting is, uh, November tenth, and you also have a meeting on the twenty-fourth. So you meet twice in November.
Yeah, yeah.
Bill, again, um, I got texted again, the, the SCTV feed is in and out, so it's been hard to follow for people. I know people are following me at home, but just for feedback. So I know, um, some people are, they're saying it's hard to follow, that the feed isn't very good. So, and I've also, um, gotten two texts around, um, whether or not we would have another listening forum. So that people, um, would, would know to sign up and, um, could participate. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah. Does anyone have an objection to, uh, setting up another listening session?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
I agree.
So, uh, the eleventh is, uh, that's two weeks from now. Or I'm sorry, the tenth.
Tenth.
The tenth is two weeks. Uh, I, I'd like to keep the momentum, uh, and, and, uh, not do it any later than that. So Mike, if we can put it on the agenda again.
We can, and we can file that ASAP so the word, so word can get out.
Yeah. And now I think maybe people who are watching, uh, now understand the process. Um, and will be, you know, maybe a little, uh, less shy. Um, I think we're, we're, we're a welcoming group here, you know? We, we want to hear what everyone has to say.
You're very kind to me.
We're nice people, we don't bite.
Hey, we're gonna recruit you.
Bill does look a little hungry with that beard, I gotta say, Bill. I like it.
You don't have to butter me up.
No, I mean, if you wanted to put a hat on and then come to my house and.
Around December twenty-fifth, yeah.
Yeah. I had a couple of kids who would love it.
Danielle, I've been teasing them about that for the last couple of meetings, so I definitely got that Santa look.
It's well overdue.
Okay, then, uh, why don't we draw this portion of the, uh, the meeting to a close? Danielle, thank you. Uh, and if, uh, uh, your husband, uh, and/or, uh, Susan Messino are, are watching, thank you for your input. Um, and we will, we'll do this again in two weeks. Okay, so Danielle, we're gonna, we're gonna press on with our, uh, our meeting. Um, you're more than welcome to stay on. It's, you know, it's a, it's a, a public meeting that anyone can attend. But, uh, I would not feel bad if you want to get back to whatever you were doing.
Thank you very much. I'll, um, I will provide you all with my contact information. So that we can continue talking.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Danielle, before you go.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna suggest using the library's communication, uh, capabilities. It'll, it'll, it'll get the word out to a much, much broader audience. And, and, you know, you can use the forum that, that you hosted last week. And, and, and get it to the library people and let, and ask them if it can be broadcast out. And then I think you can get to a, a very, very broad segment of the population.
I'm sure that they would love to do that. Um, and oh, also, I meant to say that they did, um, they did record that, um, that seminar. And we'll have it available and have it on SCTV.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, couple of things, um, uh, ju- just my happenstance, I happened to be looking at, uh, uh, the town of Stonington for totally unrelated reason, but I stumbled across, you're not gonna believe this, a draft of their affordable housing plan. And it was drafted in two thousand and eight. But I want to share something with you that I thought was pretty, pretty unusual, or, or let's say coincidental. So just someone let me know if you can see my screen.
Yeah.
This second paragraph right here. Stonington is losing ground on the ten percent overall goal. Of course, that's that eight dash thirty G ten percent. Since two thousand, Stonington has added five hundred and forty-five new housing units and zero new dedicated affordable housing units. Isn't that something? So it, this is not, uh, you know, a unique phenomenon, uh, that, that we're experiencing here in Simsbury. I'm sure i- i- it's almost, uh, uh, everywhere other than those towns that already have uh, met that, uh, ten percent. So they actually, from the year two thousand to the year two thousand and seven, they lost, uh, twenty-six basis points. So, uh, this was only a draft. Uh, basically what they had, uh, suggested for, uh, in, increasing the number of affordable units. Very, very similar to what, what we've seen. No, well, I'm sorry, what we've discussed. So I just thought it was, uh, kind of, uh, timely when I saw it. I thought I'd, I'd share it with you. So.
Hey, hey Bill?
Yeah.
Would you be willing to share that or give us a address where we can go get it?
Yeah, sure. Which way you want it? You want me to email it to you?
Sure.
Or you just, uh, or you want to go to the town's, town of Stonington, you know, website? Either way.
Email it to us, it's easier.
Access, we'll do that.
Okay, I'll, I'll send it to whatever the distribution is for, you know, the emails we get for the meeting. Uh, um, what I call the, the town email listing. Okay, yeah, I'll do that.
Bill, I think that speaks to what you were saying about the ten percent. And it's impossible. We're always gonna lose ground. So, and here it is in writing. I mean, you've, you've stated that more than once.
Well, but not if we convert existing stock.
No, I'm just saying, Holly, on, based on, as I'm just saying, this is a dilemma. And so based on, and that's what Bill has highlighted, um, you know, so because we're looking at eight thirty G within the confines of that law. So, yeah, I think.
But within the confines.
It just goes to show, it's difficult. That's all I'm saying. It's a difficult mountain to climb.
Well, I mean, I think it's difficult if you're bu- building, if you're gonna only do it with new construction. Uh, uh, again, we have more than enough that would qualify if we could, again, get people who could, who qualified for government assistance to buy homes in our town. I mean, we have more than enough stock that qualifies at the right price. But it's not, doesn't have government assistance in it yet.
Okay, uh.
Yeah, I think that's not always gonna be easy how, cause I mean, there's other, they're pretty restricted. I'm just saying, it's, that's still, even if that can be done, that's not as easy as it sounds all the time either. It's just a, it's a hard.
Yeah, it's hard, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I will note that also in that, um, Stonington Affordable Housing, uh, Plan. It, it looks like they established, um, an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Um, you know, which goes beyond the Planning Commission and Town Staff. Um, we're well down the road, I think, in preparation of our plan. Um, however, this kind of came to my mind when Danielle was talking about these other, you know, grassroots groups. I'm not sure how many there are, or if she really means like a group of people that she is familiar with. Um, but I, I, I guess, uh, I'm not at the point where I, where I'm gonna suggest we create an advisory committee. I think we have the framework of our plan. Uh, that just needs to be, um, maybe updated to include some, uh, elements that, that we haven't considered yet. And, and haven't heard yet. So.
Hey, Bill, I, I almost feel like we don't necessarily have to formalize an advisory committee if there are people, citizens like, like Danielle. Um, that have ideas that are willing to kind of informally share those. I mean, we can consider them.
Yeah.
Any and all input is good, right?
Yeah. Okay, then, uh, yep, uh, I guess we've concluded that we'll have another listening session two weeks from tonight, same format. Um, I, I will, I, I, I will press people to give us specifics. Okay, we can talk about philosophy for a long time. But without actual, uh, actionable items, we're not gonna really move, move too far, uh, forward. Mike, uh, also absent is any input from the Board of Selectmen. Um, this is something I've asked for, for, you know, a number of weeks. If their vision of where the town is supposed to go is inconsistent with ours or, uh, you know, vocal members of the public, uh, we need to know this. I think, you know, um, Danielle, uh.
I'm sorry, Bill, I lost you.
I thought you were stuck.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I lost you. You asked absent of Board of Selectmen. Yeah, the Board of Selectmen never, uh, responded to your, our request.
Okay. All right, then I will assume they have no input.
That's disappointing.
Uh, maybe I'll drop Eric.
That is very disappointing.
That's okay. No, I, I'll drop Eric and out and see. May, maybe it's just, there was other pressing things that, uh, were on the, on their, uh, agenda. But my, my point is, um, who, you know, I, we have to get, we have to get to a publishable document. Uh, I don't want to publish something that's not in lockstep with what the, the town, uh, leaders um, want to consider, you know, um, because I'm sure there will be some members of the public that have excellent ideas. Uh, that would really further the, the cause of increasing the amount of, of the number of affordable housing units in town. And that's admirable. Is it feasible is, is another item. Uh, so, you know, I don't, I don't wanna discount anything, but I also don't want to make any promises without hearing what our, our town leadership has to, has to say.
Bill, we have to ensure that each of them receives a copy of the draft material that's been put together so far. That's where the ideas, the action items are listed. And if those are gonna get a reaction, better to get that reaction sooner than later.
Yeah.
So, uh, again, prior to the meeting two weeks from now, it would be most helpful to uh, get a copy of that material to each of the members of the Board of Selectmen.
Can we get on their agenda somehow?
What I could do is share with the town manager and, uh, uh, I don't know if they meet between now and, and the tenth, actually. What's the other dilemma you have?
They met yesterday.
Yeah, they met yesterday, but.
Did the, did the request go to the board or to the first selectman or to Maria? Do you know, Michael?
Uh, went to the board. It was actually in their packet. All the members received it.
Okay.
All right, I'll, you know, maybe I'll, maybe I'll send a note to Maria and, and Eric and see if that, uh.
Man, we put a lot of work into this. They should at least
Yeah.
Say something.
Yeah, okay. Well, let's not condemn them right now, Holly, right? Okay. And yes, we did, we did put a lot of effort into this. So, yeah, it should not go unrecognized.
Not so much recognized, but it's, as you pointed out, we, we really do, they are the Board of Selectmen, not us. They're the ones who set the direction.
Okay. Um, so, I, I, unless anyone has any other comments, I'd like to, uh, kind of, um, end that discussion. Erin, you have something? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, just that I, I know that there's some board members that are watching tonight.
Okay.
So I, you know, so, so I think that's good and they're hearing this discussion. Um, and so, you know, maybe that'll, you know, we'll hear from somebody. So, but just, I just wanted to say, there are some on the, on the board that are, uh, watching.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. That, that's, that's encouraging. Okay, that's it for the, the public workshop for now. Um, Mike, do we have any, uh, correspondence? Or pending applications perhaps?
No applications. You will have a referral for the next meeting, um, on the road acceptance for Hendrick's Cottage. Uh, eight, eighty Climax Road.
Yeah.
They're wrapping up the, they've, they have final pavement. We have as built. Um, we just gotta go out, take a look at everything, make sure conditions of approval are met. And then that should be on your next agenda for acceptance. They've, they put their request into the, uh, the, uh, town engineer via the Board of Selectmen already.
Now, Mike, the town's safety standards for a road do apply because the neighborhood is not just affordable housing, correct?
Well, I mean, they're, they're, they're bound by the plan, whatever was a part of the approved plan, the highway standards. So yes, that was part of your approval that the construction of the, of the roadway and public improvements need to meet the highway standards.
Okay.
And Alan, you and I are gonna take a drive down there in the winter and see how the snow management is working.
You don't think I didn't plan that, do you?
I was gonna say, you know. Friday, Friday, you may get snow.
Yep. I need to borrow a sod though.
I, I drove, I drove, I, I drove through there, uh, last week, or maybe a week and a half ago. And, uh, uh, I did take note of the, uh, the paving that was done. Yeah, so.
Well, is the dip in the road still there?
On, on Climax?
Yeah, sure it is.
Uh, I, I didn't notice it, Alan.
Well, I, I'm sure nobody worked on that dip.
No, I don't think there was any, any work. But, you know, the sightlines and everything, you know, the, the, all of, all the trees are gone.
Yeah.
And, and the berm's been, been, uh, you know, managed, so.
Grated back.
Yeah.
So it was good sight. You had, you had, when you, when you were leaving to go on the Climax, you could see well in both directions?
That's correct.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I was, when I pulled out of that road, what's, what's it called? The, not Hendrick's Cottage Way or anything, right? But.
Hendrick's Way, maybe.
Hendrick's Way. Uh, I turned right and, um, you know, I had no difficulty looking any other direction.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, but that's because you're in that behemoth of a vehicle.
Could be, could be.
That's why I say I gotta borrow a sod.
Oh, yeah. Right. Oh, hey, Alan, I have a, a, a Miata too. We can try that.
Okay, deal.
Okay, uh, anything else, Commissioners? Any, any comments? Questions?
Just a comment that all of a sudden there seems to be a lot of activity in terms of handies and other developments that are hopefully positive.
Right, yeah, yeah. Good, okay. Uh, in the absence of any other comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
The move.
That was you, Craig?
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Dave Blumey, thank you. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? All in favor?